Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, it is what it is there.
Yeah.
The March 3rd, 2021 meeting of the Yarmouth Planning Board is about to convene. As a precautionary measure to reduce the spread of the coronavirus, this meeting will be held by remote participation. My name is Kathy Williams and I'm the Yarmouth Town Planner and will be serving as moderator for this virtual meeting. I will now turn it over to the Planning Board Chair.
Welcome to the March 3rd, 2021 Planning Board Meeting. My name is Joanne Crowley and I'm the Chair of the Yarmouth Planning Board. I will begin by taking a roll call to establish quorum. Brad Goodwin?
Present.
Liz Harts Grove?
Present.
Susan Britta?
Present.
Tom Barron?
Present.
Will Rubenstein? Chris Vincent? Joanne Crowley? Present. With the quorum present, I will now call the meeting to order. Do you want me to read the Governor Baker piece? Kathy?
I can read it. It's fine. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, this meeting of the Yarmouth Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access and participate in the proceedings as provided by, in the order. Persons who wish to view this meeting while in progress may do so by watching this virtual meeting here. Unfortunately, we are not live streaming this evening, but it will be put on the YouTube channel in the very near future for future viewing. Please be patient as we work to overcome any challenges with the virtual meeting. For all meetings, all audience participants enter the virtual meeting muted. Participants will be unmuted if called upon to speak by the Chair or moderator. We have no attendees at this time. If you're not speaking, please mute yourself to avoid unnecessary background noise. Do not use speaker phone or Bluetooth devices when speaking, and all votes must be roll call votes. There are no agenda items this evening with applicants or presenters, and none of the items on the agenda this evening are public hearings. They require designated public comment period, however, public comment can be taken at this discretion of the Chair. Members of the public may request to speak by selecting the raise hand button or pressing star nine on their phone and waiting for the Chair to call on them to speak. Members of the public recognized by the Chair are asked to identify themselves by first and last name and affiliation for the public record and then provide their comment. I will now hand the meeting back to the Chair.
Thank you, Kathy. And do we have any members of the public who have chosen to join us?
There's no attendees today.
There's no attendees, okay. We have three primary items on our agenda tonight. Community visioning and update Kathy's going to give us and tell us a little bit more about what's going to happen next, at our next meeting on March 17th. We have an action to take on the growth incentive zone. And then we're also going to get an update on the Mass DOT Route 28 project, where we have included in your package a draft letter response to that. So Kathy, if you'd like to start with the update on visioning, please.
In your packets, just to kind of let everyone know, we are going to put out another little flyer that goes in with the water bill inserts. We are combining it with the Yarmouth COVID Relief Program being done by Mary Wagon. We have it on one sheet and that's going to go out in March, April and May. And it just kind of gives people a very brief update of kind of where we are with the visioning and letting them know about the additional workshops and surveys coming in June 2021. We also sent out a direct mailing to the people in Comiquid who do not get water bills so that they will receive this information as well. I have been in contact with Horsley Witten and they're very close to having their summary completed and they should be fully available for our March 17th meeting for that summary information as well as a little presentation to provide for us. I have not seen it yet. Hopefully I'm going to be getting it later this week. Hi, Will. And we're going to have a staff meeting with them next Tuesday in preparation for our meeting on the 17th. So we should be, we should be in good shape with that.
Any, any, any action homework that we need to prepare for between now and the 17th, Kathy? Will we be getting something in advance, do you think?
Yes. Yep, you'll be getting information in the packet. So you'll have all of that to kind of digest and absorb. And then, then the real work starts of trying to come up with the, with the different goals and objectives and how we want to move forward. So it'll be really interesting to see kind of how they've broken it down into the themes because I haven't seen all the surveys either. So it should be very interesting. I think we will see a lot of things that we've seen before, but I'm sure there'll be some different gems that we haven't quite tapped into previously. I do know that a lot of people had mentioned something about, you know, this is being like our third visioning process and why do we keep doing it and nothing happens? I just like to, you know, kind of let people know that, that I think this is, in previous efforts, it's really been just a vision statement. And we're going to be creating a vision statement and a vision plan, which is really going to be the backbone as we move forward with the development and updating of the local comprehensive plan. So I think it's just maintaining that momentum and continuing to go to get to what we, the ultimate goal is a certified local comprehensive plan with the Cape Cod Commission. I think that's a little bit different.
Yeah, yes, Susan, you have a question?
Yes, Kathy, is the, is the Horsley Witten summary, are they going to include comments from the Chamber of Commerce session with the business owners?
Yes, they are. Yeah, I sent them the minutes to that.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, Susan. Any other questions, Tom?
Yeah. Kathy, you just said that the visioning was going to be instrumental in getting the local comprehensive plan prepared?
Yes, it's step one.
Yeah, it's a regulatory requirement.
Okay, well, I had that, I had that circled for the, for the GIZ item following. I'll hold off until then.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Any other questions or comments with regard to community vision? Okay, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is our request that we would like to make via a motion this evening to the Board of Selectmen to provide a request to the Commission to extend our GIZ. And I'd like Kathy to walk through. She's put several pieces of information in our package. So Kathy, why don't you walk through what we have in our package, the process and what action we need to take this evening?
Sure, I think everyone here might have varying levels of understanding of what a growth incentive zone is. But basically, the Cape Cod Commission has their thresholds for what they consider to be developments of regional impact. And once you reach those threshold, once you reach those thresholds, you have to go to the Cape Cod Commission, go through a rather lengthy and somewhat costly process. And they have a whole wide range of criteria that they want to look at. In our growth incentive zone, we had, which was done in 2007, we had identified 35 motels that we wanted to provide some relief from those thresholds. So our growth incentive zone modifies the Cape Cod Commission's development of regional impact thresholds. So if you want to convert a motel to housing, you don't have to go through the development of regional impact, even if you have more than 29 units of housing. You want to go from, you know, and expand a hotel into the same use as another hotel, again, you would not have to go through the growth or go through the DRI process. So that's very valuable to a lot of different people as far as moving forward. I think, you know, in the summary that I provided here for you, it's really had an impact on some significant projects. The Yarmouth Commons, which has 69 units of housing, that would have had to go through the Commission. Yarmouth Gardens, which has 40 units of housing, that would have had to go through. And then the New Irish Village, which, which converted the motel to 120 units of senior housing. That's another thing that would have had to have gone through. So having our growth incentive zone has helped allow us to redevelop some of our hotel motel properties much more easily and, and more fiscally, in a less costly manner for developers. So the ordinance was put into place in October of 22 of 2007. A few years ago, we had asked for an, it was a 10-year expiration date. We had asked in 2017 for a four-year extension, which brings it through October 22nd of 2021. I think we all agree that we want to continue to maintain these benefits. So we're requesting for an extension of the GIZ without a designated expiration date. In your packets are the new 2018 GIZ regulations, which allows for an extension without an expiration date as a minor modification, which is relatively simple. It can be done through the committee on planning and regulation in a public meeting. It doesn't need to be a formal public hearing. But anything, I think this probably gets to Tom's question. Anything more extensive modification, broadening the, the level of threshold or adding different properties? That's something that would be considered a major modification and we would need to have a certified local comprehensive plan in order to do that. So in, in your packets, the things that we need to submit to the Commission are generally the little narrative that kind of describes where we are on some things, including our infrastructure, as well as a summary, a reporting summary of the different properties that have utilized the GIZ since its inception, as well as how that impacted things like wastewater and traffic generation, which were two of the major components of the, of the GIZ. So the formal extension needs to be made by the Board of Selectmen, but I know that they're going to want to know how the Planning Board feels all about this. So we're hoping to get some type of recommendation from you guys. And there's a draft motion in your memo to recommend a request to extend the Yarmouth Growth Incentive Zone without a designated expiration date. And then we have to proceed to going to the Board of Selectmen.
Any questions of Kathy about the process? Yes, Susan?
I have not so much of the process, Joanne. Can I ask a couple of questions about what triggers, Kathy, what triggers a DRI examination? Is it strictly size?
It's a, it's a bunch of different things. It can be the, it can be something is, as the, how many acres of the land? If you have a really, really large tract of land, it's over 30 acres, then you would need to go to the Commission. If you have more than 29 units of housing, you would need to go to the Commission. Typically, it's more than 10,000 square feet of commercial or 20,000 square feet of a mixed use situation. And they count things like basements and stuff, so it gets a little, it gets a little bit tricky.
Kathy, do you know how many towns on the Cape have actually asked for an extension, an exemption from the Head Cod Commission regulations?
A growth incentive zone? I know Barnstable has a growth incentive zone. I'm not sure who else who might have, like, there's also some other modifications that can be done through a Chapter H. I'm not, I'm not familiar with what other towns have.
Well.
Yes, Tom?
Formally, I would, I would, I would say that we should take the motion, make a motion. I'll make the motion that we submit the letter to the Board of Selectmen. I want to discuss this after, but that official act, I think we can, we can all agree on doing right up front.
Tom, can I just make a comment? I would not agree to any extension without a deadline. I think giving a blanket extension without a deadline is very poor public policy. We've had, we asked for an extension once with a deadline. I would not support an extension without a deadline. I think that's just foolhardy, especially with what, the potential of things that could happen on 28. There may be some funding programs that the town might be eligible to participate in if they, if they, for example, criteria might be that they do work with the Cape Cod Commission. So I don't know if, I think it might be too short sighted to ask for an extension without a deadline.
Well, a deadline is reasonable, but it also, it also hamstrings for the future efforts as well. It makes, when you have a drop dead date, it, you're always working to try to get everything done before that. And sometimes that isn't all.
But Tom, that hasn't hindered Route 28 to date. That, the deadlines have not in any way hampered development. The fact that 28 is an example of working without the Cape Cod Commission, I would say we, you know, I'm a huge supporter of the Cape Cod Commission. So, you know, in general, I would be way more inclined to have projects done in coordination with the Commission as opposed to exempt from the Commission.
It, it, that's a good, that's a good point, but I would, I would offer that Mass DOT is not subject to commission directives.
Right, but they're just doing the streets and the sidewalks and not doing development on land.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like to just interrupt for one second. Tom, I feel like we're conflating the Route 28 discussion with the GIZ and I don't think they're connected, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. So I'd like to keep the discussion with regard to GIZ.
Totally agree.
A letter of extension? Yes, Liz, you have, you have some questions, comments?
Well, I was just wondering, usually they're for like 10 years. So is the Cape Cod Commission even receptive to us even asking for, you know, no expiration date on our GIZ? Because if it's very limited to begin with, I know Barnstable just had ours renewed and it was for 10 years. It did not, it, it's not an exclusive use forever.
The first extension was for four years, right Kathy? From 2017 to?
It was.
2021, okay. Was there any particular reason Kathy, that was limited just to four years?
Well, I, I think that there's something with the new regulations that allow you, it says unless specified otherwise and the GIZ designation decision shall be in effect without expiration unless and until revoked or rescinded. When you can rescind it, the town could rescind it, or they could revoke it if we were abusing it pursuant to Section 7. And then it says municipalities who had an approved GIZ prior to the date of these regulations, which is us, may request modification to its GIZ designation decision to accept the applicable ability of the terms and provisions in these regulations, including in this section, meaning without expiration, and may be deemed a minor modification hereunder.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Will, your comments?
I just wanted to make sure we're in the right part of the meeting. I'm not sure if Tom made a motion. I'm not sure if there was a second. We've had a lot of really discussion, so I'm not really kind of sure where we are in that process, Madam Chair.
That's a good, very good question of point of order. Will, I appreciate that. We have not had a formal motion.
Okay.
We're in the point of discussion and clarifying this revisiting of the GIZ for some newer members or for those of us whose memory is really bad, to just bring us up to speed. So at some point, we will, we will get to the motion, but thank you for that clarification. Do you have a question or comment, Will, as it relates to?
No, I mean, I, I can see, I can see both sides of the, of the discussion to this point, but I agree with where Kathy was headed is I did take a look at the updated regulations from the Cape Cod Commission and there is leeway to do it. There is also a leeway to rescind it. So it's not a, it's not a decision without, not a decision to take lightly, but also not a decision that cannot be reconsidered there. That was not great English, but I think you get the point.
Okay. Brad, you've been through this a few times. Any, any thoughts on this?
Yeah, I, I think we should move the GIZ like Barnstable did, but I don't see as that as an option. I saw the words modify or change. I don't want to change or modify it. I want to move it. Is that possible?
We can't do anything other than, I believe, extending it without having to be considered a major modification. And I don't think we're ready for any type of major modification at this point. I did.
I'm sorry.
I, I did contact Jonathan Ideman at the Commission previously and he had written back that, that the new regulations allow the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen to apply to the Standing Committee for a modification of the Yarmouth GIZ designation decision to eliminate the existing specific duration or expiration provisions contained in the decision in favor of a continuous duration. So as far as the question of what like Liz had with regard to the Commission, I think it's something that, that is allowable. I think having a continuous gives us, gives us flexibility. Trying to have something like, like I agree with Tom, 10 years or whatever, then you're constantly working towards that. We have a lot of things we need to accomplish. We really need to be sure that we have an infrastructure system on Route 28 that can handle it. If we have a new growth incentive zone, we're going to have to prove that, show all, all of that information out. And that's all going to be information that's going to be contained within the local comprehensive plan. So we'll be able to have that information available for modifications to the GIZ.
The, the, the map, which defines our, our GIZ itself has to be changed considerably. There are properties that have been dropped off of the map. There are properties that should be on the map. So yeah, there's a, there's a lot of work to be, to be done to modify along with anything to do with the local comprehensive plan. So we should extend now and, and, and look to improve these other elements that go into a total major revision.
If I may, Kathy, I'd like to just ask a, kind of a basic question. The GIZ is a good thing? Yes?
I think the growth incentive zone is a good thing. I heard what Susan said with regard to she likes having the Commission involved in projects. The project, the problem is that these projects would simply not happen at all.
But Kathy, I still don't agree with that.
Oh, I know it. I, I 100% know it.
Meaning if they had to go through a DRI, yeah, they, they, there's enough trouble just getting through us.
Right, and I think the fact that we, the standards that we have in place gave us something like the Yarmouth Commons. I'm not sure Yarmouth Commons would be any better whatsoever had it gone through the Cape Cod Commission. There might be certain areas with regard to traffic that they might have been able to supplement, but then that would have been some type of additional costs associated with that. It probably would have been some type of traffic mitigation fee that they would have had, had to pay, which would have impacted the project. That was an unusual project because it had so much grant funding related to it that made it even possible. A private developer could not do Yarmouth Commons. And if they had to try to do Yarmouth Commons with the, with the Cape Cod Commission, it would not happen. There's no doubt in my mind.
Susan, if I, if I may, can I, can I just ask you? The involvement of the Commission, if I'm hearing you, is a good thing? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I, I don't want to get into a conversation about the validity of the Cape Cod Commission and Yarmouth. I think the Cape Cod Commission is terrific, but I also know that Yarmouth and Kathy's right. Lots of things would not happen if the, if the burden of development is just too much. My concern is granting an exemption without a deadline. That's the only concern I have. If you want to, if we want to modify the motion to ask for an extension for five years or 10 years to be consistent with what we think the wastewater, you know, project is going to be as it comes down to 28, I'm fine with that. I am very concerned about asking the Board of Selectmen to ask for an extension or an exemption without a deadline. I think that's very poor public policy and I don't think we ought to be doing it. That's my only concern.
Let me, I just want to make sure we're, we're clear on our, on, on what we're asking for.
Right.
I believe we're asking for an extension of the GIZ as it is now, which doesn't, it, it's just what it is now, to extend it without a deadline, meaning we just take advantage of everything that the GIZ gives us now as we seek to modify, get in a position to modify it in the future. Is that my understanding, Kathy?
Yes.
Okay, the first extension was limited to four years, from 2017 to 2021. Kathy, do you have any idea why they limited the first request to four years?
I think we were hoping that we would be further along in everything that we've worked on, further along in the local comprehensive plan, further along in wastewater. And then COVID, let's face it, I mean, that, that killed a whole, whole year. I just want to be clear that the, that the GIZ does not exempt people from the Cape Cod Commission. It modifies and raises and changes the thresholds for which a project would need to go through. There are still projects, and again, we're only talking about 35 motel properties total. And, and as Tom mentioned, a lot of them have already been developed or changed or went without, without any need for, for a DRI. So it's not an exemption. It's, it's a changing of the DRI threshold.
My concern, again, is us asking to, to whatever the language is in the motion, without a deadline. I think we should be consistent with what we did before, which was we put a four-year deadline.
Four years isn't going to cut it.
Well, pick a number, 10 years.
Well, Liz, yes, you have a comment?
I have a curiosity question. Brad, you mentioned that you wanted to alter it or expand the dimensions. What exactly is your interest for that?
When we came up with the growth incentive zone back in the mid 2000s, we knew that our hotel stock was tired. We unfortunately had pie in the sky, pink glasses that we thought Hyatt and Marriott and everyone would run down to the Cape and presto change or turn them all into beautiful new hotels. And in 10 years, we got one, we got the Hampton Inn. And to, to back up Karen Green and Kathy Williams, it wouldn't have happened. Mr. Darling wouldn't have built that without the DRI exemption or relief. So that, that is true. However, that pie in the sky of 10 years only gave us one. And between economic downturns and the fact that Cape Cod really isn't the lure it was in the 70s, people don't want to make beautiful flagged, that's the proper term, flagged hotels here. And so we're turning them into residential section, whatever number, eight, 10, 12, 106 units of housing. And it's, I don't think it's really helping 28. So my answer is a little bit long. I was just hoping that after a bite of this apple of 14 years, we could start to modify it and move the GIZ over parcels or sections of retail space and allow retail to take a crack at the relief. But it looks like that is not going to be able to happen. So I, right now, I'm flustered on how I'm going to vote on this. But, but I can see, I can see a, a stop dead date at least forces whatever Planning Board is, is before the town to deal with this again and not just have an open window going on forever.
I actually agree with that. I think it's really important to have some type of, not a burdensome, close, like four-year date, but something that gives us enough flexibility that Kathy doesn't have to revisit this in four years, first of all, because it's an extensive amount of work for staff to go through this. And I'm not trying to diminish that, that we should, our expectations and lower our expectations of our staff when it comes to our growth of our community. But I think though, allowing a little bit more time to be nimble with the visioning process we're about to go through and identifying where the shift needs to go. So if it is on the Barnstable line that needs to then shift closer towards the central part of the town, then we need to be able to modify that. I agree that we should have some type of deadline. I do not think that there should be in just no expiration date. It doesn't hold our feet as a town or staff to the fire for making sure that we stay flexible and relatable to current times and locations. So, but I think we need to have some type of like maybe five or six years and then be able to go through the process. Once we've gone through the LCP and we have gone through the visioning, we can then make it the modifications and now go through the process of changing the GIZ layout and the whole civic engagement that goes along with it, so.
I guess I would say that perhaps 10 years, if you guys want to put a limit on, I'm comfortable with 10 years. Five years or six years in order to get through the visioning, local comprehensive plan, we need to make some serious zoning changes. And then to get all the information together and go through the approval of a GIZ in five or six years with, I'm sorry, it's me and maybe Karen occasionally and maybe Kyle occasionally. It's just not going to happen in four or five years. And it just puts an unrealistic expectation on staff or set up to fail every single day with too much stuff to do. So let's at least give us a reasonable shot of trying to get it done. You guys are comfortable with, with, with having a limit on it? I'm fine with that as long as it's a reasonable one. But four years is not good, five, six, 10 would be something that's more palatable, I think.
Thank you, Kathy. Tom?
Well, look, the present, the, the, the former regulations required a deadline. The new regulations are open-ended. And yeah, we, we could designate a 10-year horizon as, as a goal, but there's no need to hamstring ourselves to, to a drop dead date. We can still extend for 10 years, but, but within the, within the new regulations, which don't require an expiration date.
Yes, Susan?
Liz, what was the Barnstable extension? Was it 10 years, the most recent one they just did?
I believe so. We went through the whole community engagement process because there was a parcel that we were considering actually putting into it and it did not go through. So we actually just retained the existing footprint.
But it was a 10-year, it was 10-year window, correct?
If I remember correctly, yes. And we did it about two or three years ago.
Okay.
Okay, on, on, on that, I will make the motion. I'll, I'll quote it right off of, off of the sheet here. Motion to recommend a request to. Motion to recommend a request to extend the Yarmouth Growth Incentive Zone with a, a target date or a designated expiration of 10 years.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. So can, can, can we just take a second and link up wastewater to this timetable? Just big picture, broad strokes. I'm not, Tom's shaking his head. I, I, I'm not sure what that means. But what I'm getting at is, what I'm getting at is, are we, is it not enough time? I'm just, just, just asking since we're discussing this important motion.
I'm on wastewater. And everything, and everything in their construction schedule is supposed to be completed by 26. So within 10 years is going to, going to be satisfied with this. So I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't link it up with wastewater.
Okay, I apologize, Madam Chair. I wasn't trying to make a direct link, but I feel like our position as a planning board allows us to look a little broader, you know, when we're making these kinds of decisions.
It's a good point, Will.
Oh, no, I get it. I'm just, thank you. And what, but what I'm getting at is, we didn't think we'd have a pandemic either, Tom, right? So, so like, as much as I want to share your optimism about 2020.
We have to be flexible.
I am a, what is that word? I am a something skeptic, but it's a very polite term. So like, I just want to make sure, since we're on the record and we're talking through these issues, and I'll turn it over to Susan, because I apologize for interrupting, that that is still going to be okay, recognizing that we can come back and rescind or revise. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Susan?
Just, let's do the flip side. Kathy, do you see any downside to a 10-year window?
I guess I would just.
Let me put it this way, lethal. I mean, is anything deadly going to happen in the next 10 years that, you know, we couldn't do because we had the 10-year window?
I don't know. But same as Will said, we weren't anticipating COVID. So, I mean, it could be, who knows?
Okay. If we have another COVID, you know what? The G I Z is not going to matter because no, we, we just probably won't live through it. But I think Will's point is well taken. You know, we get a lot going on. And as long as we can sort of mesh some of the thinking and do some linkages, it will be to our benefit. So I think 10 years is great. I think Liz, Liz's comment about the 10 years is good. Maybe in 10 years, we're going to have to extend it, but it gives us a 10-year window within which to do some planning and development and bookends it, which means we got to do something in 10 years or we need to have some plan in 10 years. So I'm fine with, with the motion as Tom, you know, read it with a 10-year, with a 10-year window. I think it's reasonable. I think the Cape Cod Commission would think it's reasonable. I think the board would think it's reasonable. I don't think anyone on the board of selectmen is going to say, you know, I want seven or two.
Yes, Kathy?
I think the intention is, is exactly what Brad's been talking about and Liz was talking about. Once we get some clearer ideas on things, our vision for Route 28, it's natural you're going to want to change the G I Z. And, and some of the properties are going to fall off. There might be certain activity centers we want to promote and move some things around. That's invariable and I'd like to do that. It's on my bucket list before I retire is to modify the growth incentive zone. I have five things. I'm not going to tell you all what they are today.
I believe that was on the agenda, Madam Chair.
Kathy's bucket list?
Yeah.
My work bucket list. So I'd like to think that we could, we, we would definitely want to do something within 10 years. I always envisioned that we would do something. I think just having the expiration date extended without a specific date just gives a little flexibility. If it's 11 years before it finally gets approved or something, it gives a little bit more flexibility. But I think if you guys are comfortable with the 10 years, I, I think that that should be something that we can work within. I'd also like to, to confirm with the commission, and I don't think it's an issue that if you did want to extend it again, you could. I know the last G I Z regulation said you could ask for one extension.
Yeah, that was going to be my question, Kathy, if this is our last request that we'd be able to make. So I think that would be an, an important, an important point to clarify. And the, the second thing.
That was my point about the new regulations, which allow much more flexibility.
Well, that's where I'm going, Tom, is that somewhere along the line, the Cape Cod Commission thought this was a good idea. They think it's a good idea to give towns the flexibility not to lock themselves into a window with things changing so much. It was the Cape Cod Commission who came up with this idea not to trap a deadline on towns. My personal opinion is that we should go and give ourselves the most flexibility that we can. Analogy is probably not appropriate, but if Uncle Sam said to me, I don't have to pay my taxes on April 15th, you just get them to me sometime before you die, I'd, I'd say, yeah. It's a terrible analogy, but it's not. As a student of public policy as well, Susan, I hate the notion of not a deadline. It makes me nuts. And I, I think it's, it, it can be, it can be imperative sometimes. But somewhere in the thinking of the Cape Cod Commission, they think this is a good thing not to necessarily have a drop dead date. I, I wasn't there for the discussions. I don't know why they are allowing this. But if someone says it's okay, my particular position would be, I'm okay with it. This, with wastewater, with visioning, with several, and, and adding in the calendar, if in fact zoning changes have to be made, we get one shot a year to make them at annual town meeting. And sometimes we don't get what we recommend. So just that annual calendar of zoning change alone could bump a year onto something just like that. So that, I think there's some constraints here that, that are beyond just the human resource constraints that Kathy alone, and let's be very clear, there are no other assistant planners or anybody else who's doing this. And I, I think we need to, from my personal perspective, to give as much flexibility as we can. So do we have any other, any other discussion with regard to this? So we have a motion on the floor to extend, to request to the Board of Selectmen that the, we extend the Yarmouth Growth Incentive Zone for a period of 10 years beyond its current expiration date. And so I'd like to take a vote. All those in favor?
Roll call.
It has to be roll call.
We have to do a roll call. Sorry. Get my roll call list here.
I've missed, we've missed this, haven't we, Madam Chair? It's been what? It's been too long.
Yeah, I forget what, I forget what everybody's name is.
That's why we, that's why we type them into the little boxes.
I have all my sheets here. I prepare. I get nervous. Mr. Goodwin?
I don't like being handstrung by the, I like the D R I relief. I like the G I Z. I just don't like the fact that we're just not moving it. I'm going to, I'm going to abstain. I'd rather vote against it, but I don't want to send an alarm to the selectmen. I'm going to abstain.
Well, okay.
It'll pass. I mean, if I was, if, if, it'll pass. So my vote's not going to matter. I just, I just don't like, I don't like the way we're handstrung. That's all. But I like the G I Z. So I'm going to abstain.
I guess my only point, Brad, is that this is just to extend it. It's not that we're not going to look at it and modify it again. I think the more people who vote for it, I think your abstention might be seen as something different than what it really is.
Then I could write, I could write a small piece if you want, if you, if you want to.
It's your, it's up to you if you want to abstain. I'm just saying.
But I've been doing this, I've been doing this, I, when we did 2007 to 2017, we thought we were going to have something. We didn't get much. And then we extended it again. We thought we'd get something else. We really didn't get much except residential. And now we're doing another 10 years. And I just fear what it's going to happen. And I like the G I Z, so that I'm hoping. But it's not what we envisioned back in the mid 2000s. We were all, had more hair and more vim and more vigor and we just thought it was really going to do something really nice for Yarmouth. And I really don't think it has. So I'm going to abstain.
Okay, I just said a point of clarification. The, the motion is for the 10-year extension. Everyone understands that.
Oh, that's not for the whole, that's not for the whole kit and caboodle to, to accept it and to slap a 10-year warrant, uh, time limit on it? Or we're just voting on the 10-year?
I'm sorry, it's to extend the existing one.
Just the extension.
Just extending what we have right now so that we can work on getting a better one.
I agree. I thought you were asking a two-part vote. Yes, it's still.
I'm sorry about that.
Extend it and to keep it the way it is. That's the vote.
Yes, and, and work on something else that we would come back with later. Okay.
Agreed.
Susan?
Just a clarification. Kathy, I think you mentioned that anything other than just a plain extension is a much more complicated process, correct? So this is just the plain extension, current G I Z extended for 10 years. And then we can go back into it.
Yes.
And come up with, okay, so there's no, no major modifications, just the extension for 10 years.
Correct. I mean, we could replace it in seven years with something completely different.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Chairman.
Okay, so we've had a couple of points of clarification. I'd like to, if it, if I may, I hope I'm not breaking any Robert's rules of order. I'd like to take a roll call on what you've heard and what the motion on the floor is to extend the current G I Z for 10 years. So let me start again. Mr. Goodwin?
I abstain.
Liz Hartsgrove?
Aye.
Susan Britta?
Aye.
Tom Darren?
Aye.
Will Rubenstein?
Aye.
Joanne Crowley?
Aye.
The motion passes?
Before we get off of the G I Z topic, Kathy, I had a question for you concerning, I, I heard a rumor of a D R I for that communication poll that's being planned by the, by the chapel here on 28.
Tom, if I may, if I may, Tom, I'd like to move that to the part of the agenda where we can have some open discussion. Because I want to get to, I want to get to the other items on the agenda that we need to go. Yeah, we'll cover it later under a board item questions, a board member questions, if that's okay.
Good enough.
So we have, we've, we've cleared that motion. And we'd like to move on to the Mass DOT project on Route 28. Kathy has drafted a letter of response to that. Kathy, why don't you run us through what you know about it, which from our discussions, not very much.
Yeah, I, I'm afraid, I've never seen them send out a letter like this prior to the 25% submission. And I even asked the guy from G P I and they're like, oh no, we're, you're supposed to be doing this. And like, how can people comment on something that's a locust map and, you know, like a three-sentence description? So you don't have to respond at all. You can just not do anything. It was on a Concom agenda and they decided not to, to say anything. But because this is on Route 28 and, you know, there are some general elements or ideas that you might want to be in support of. I, I think it's up to you guys as to, as to whether you want to send, send in a letter. The draft letter that I have is very general. It kind of gives a general supportive things like improving pedestrian connectivity with fixing the sidewalks and having it be handicap accessible. They're proposing a bicycle path on the, on one side. One thing that we did find from the road safety audit is Route 28 is very, very dangerous for cyclists. Because they don't go with the traffic, they're going against the traffic. It, it's extremely dangerous. So having that would be helpful. And it will also obviously be very important with regard to wastewater because it'll help us put our sewer pipes in less expensively. And DPW also has some water main replacements that they're proposing. I think the one concern that I had and maybe the board would consider talking about is that the section that they mentioned is very wide. It's wider than the existing layout in many, many locations. So there will be strip takings that will be necessary for some of the private property. And without seeing the extent of those, it's very hard to say. And I think the idea was to express that concern and then balancing the desire for the improvements with the impacts to the business properties and also providing any mitigation or restoration of any impacted areas. So you guys can not put anything in, you can put this in, modify this, or however you guys want to do it. This is a very unusual process. I've never seen this before.
Comments, discussion? Yes, Liz?
I'll start. Yeah, I was completely shocked by the lack of information. And, and I thought that the draft letter was extremely kind and generous. And a little too nice, actually. I think I would firm it up a little. And my main concerns are, we don't know what it looks like. We don't know what the shared pat, used path is. What exactly do they mean by that? Like how, what's the look? What's the feel? It's going, these changes are going to change the whole look and feel of the portion that they're going to actually do because it's expanding. It's, it's adding sidewalks. It's adding more accessibility options. It's going to be really altering the whole feel and look of it. It's going to get a whole new facelift. You know, like all the rickety yuckiness of that section of 28 is going to be gone. So we really need to be cautious and make sure that if we're going to put an opinion on it, we got to see what it looks like. I want actually sidewalks on both ends, both sides, not just the north side. We have all this brand new housing on the south end of it, but the sidewalk's going to be on the north side? That doesn't make any sense to me.
The south side has the shared use pathway, which is for pedestrians and bicycles.
Yeah, but who wants a stroller with kids on a shared use path with bikes? It doesn't make any sense. I want sidewalks on both ends. It's going to be safe for children to walk and wait for the school bus and not have to worry about bicycles and all sorts of other things. And what is that shared use? How is it going to be actually safe for cars? Is there an actual like barrier in between that use? We haven't seen anything. So we can't make an educated response. In my opinion, I think we should be asking for things rather than making any comments on it. So that's my.
We don't have to comment at all. I could simply say back that the planning board decided not to comment because there was insufficient information.
I would definitely send some type of comment back like that. So it's on record that if they're asking for us to send, to make a comment on it, then you, that's not efficient and effective.
I have a slightly different tack on that. Last year, there was a solicitation by Mass DOT on 28 for ideas, not only on 28, but Capewide for, for transportation requests or, or requests for modification, road intersections, things of that sort. So there, there is, there has been solicitation from Mass DOT specifically on this section of 28. And so you're, you're right, the, the, the letter that they sent was totally inadequate. It, it was so vague. They, they have a lot more information that they could have been sharing. The 25%, if they're already at 25% or about to be at 25%, there should be some more information available for us to look at. Take, take for example, even, even the, the rail trail extension, Phase 3. That has been in 25% design for, for almost three years. So let's, let's get some more information from Mass DOT. Again, Mass DOT is not subject to Cape Cod Commission in, in these, in these efforts.
Kathy, can you, can you just respond to what, what level of information have you? We have not seen anything up to 20, we haven't seen anything other than that letter and the map of our little town.
That's it.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe that they just submitted the 25% today. I didn't receive it. It went to the DPW department. So I haven't even seen it.
Okay, so we, we've got some comments from Liz. Yes, Susan? You comments on the letter? Or not?
Kathy, could we write a letter that starts out with like a general, you know, the town, you know, supports DOT's efforts in whatever word you want to use. in whatever word you want to use, rehabbing Route 28, but then go on to say, however, given the lack of specificity, um, either you can say the, I don't know, is this letter sent by the selectman or is this being sent by the board of, uh?
This would be from the planning board. It was a letter addressed to us.
Yeah, say the planning board, uh, given the lack of specificity, the planning board is reluctant or cannot, or is unwilling to, uh, wholeheartedly endorse, uh, all the elements of the program because we don't have specificity, or something like that. So a general, no, we love the idea you're improving 28. However, given the lack of specificity, we cannot wholeheartedly or completely or entirely, or, you know, endorse all the elements of the program because we don't have enough information to make that endorsement.
Yeah, I, I think we've, I, thank you, Susan. I think we've captured some of that Kathy in the, in the draft in that second paragraph. But I think an opening of, an opening is important that we are welcoming this project. This is very important to the town. Um, I, I think that would be, uh, even though it's to the consultant, it's not even to DOT.
It is to DOT.
It is DOT?
Yeah.
I thought it, I thought it was.
The letter said to send him to Tom Courier, who's the project manager.
I'm sorry, and you did address it to him. I apologize. I was looking at GPI. Um, yeah, the letter is to DOT. Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea. Kath, we could, we could work it that way. I don't want to really wordsmith it too much, but.
Yeah, there's a hint of it in the existing letter. I think Liz is right. Maybe we ought to be a little more, you know, test pounding at this point. Say, look, we need more specificity. We love the idea.
Yeah.
Uh, but we can't wholeheartedly endorse it until we have more spec, more specifics. And love and kisses, Joanne Crowley.
Love and kisses. I, I think it's just, it's exactly what, we could do something very similar to exactly what Susan said, of just say, we like the idea of, of, um, you know, redevelopment of this section of Route 28, but without more specifics, we can't provide any further comments at this time. We look forward to seeing the 25% design plans.
And then we'll fully comment. Then we'll be prepared or in a position to make more substantive comments. Yeah, always make sure we keep our, you know, our thumb on the scale. We want to come back and comment.
Just a, um, uh, little cross, uh, cross referencing here. Again, the construction schedule for wastewater, um, and they've been doing a lot of coordination with Mass DOT on 20, on 28. Uh, but their, their construction schedule does not start until, uh, November of '22.
Right.
Which means that there's got to be a design phase going on now, which, which don't show, that doesn't show in the, in the scheduling. So, so something is amiss here. Something needs to be clarified, um, particularly if it's going to affect us, uh, for, for all the other work that is going to be needed in the, in the town.
Right, and the necessary, and you're right, and the requirement really for the town to save money, that we coordinate with DOT. Because that's always going to save any money, is make sure that the water is consistent with what the state is doing. Um, which I think was the, you know, sort of goes back to Kathy's letter. We love the idea, but, uh, but we can't make any comments until we have more specifics. Uh, but I think saying we love the idea sort of says, you know, we want to be in, we want to be in there with the state. We want to save money. We want to make sure these things are all coordinated together. Uh, but we want to be happy with our recommendation. And we can't make that now.
Agreed.
Okay. Uh, so Kathy, if you, if you've got enough, um, info there, I think, taking the comments we've received here along with some of the, the wording you had put together, I, I do think we should respond. I, I hope we all agree on that. I think we should be on record.
Agreed.
And, and, and so, um, why don't you work something up Kathy? And you can send it to all of us, I guess, via email. And we'll, we, I don't need, we don't need to take a formal vote on it. Um, uh, and we'll, we'll get it back to the consultant.
Kathy, is the letter time-sensitive?
Oh, it was sent to, to us in February 2nd.
So it's not time-sensitive.
Again, I've never seen this before. I don't, I, I, so I, I'm unfamiliar. Um.
Well, that's good that we're going to comment. I think Joanne's right. If someone asks you for your opinion, give it. Um, don't ever pass up the opportunity to comment if the state's saying to you, what do you think? Tell them what you think.
Yeah, I, I think the public realm and what that looks like makes a big difference.
Yep.
About the whole feel and function of our town. And I think it will definitely spur people, um, to do more on their own private properties. So it's, it's a huge part of the equation.
Kathy, when, when was, when was the letter received?
It was dated February 2nd. I, I don't think it's any issue. We can send it in and say, we're looking forward to seeing the 25% design plans and then take a look at them.
Yeah.
Right.
Let me see that effect. Good.
Okay, um, so we've covered that. Um, on to, um, minutes of our last meeting, January 6th. They have a motion to accept the minutes of the January 6th, 2021 meeting.
So moved.
Second, 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 second.
Thank you.
Sorry, that was cute. That was cute.
I had a feeling you would appreciate that.
I did.
That's a good one. That's a good one. Uh, we could do a roll call on this one again. Um, uh, Mr. Baron?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Britta?
Aye.
Susan was absent, just so you know.
Who was?
Susan.
Oh, Susan wasn't here. Sorry. Uh, Brad?
Approved.
Love Liz Hartsgrove?
Aye.
Uh, Will Rubenstein?
Aye.
Uh, and Joanne Crowley? Next up are, uh, zoning board of appeals. Uh, Kathy, anything to beyond what you've sent us?
No, I don't think anything.
I can report, uh, last week, um.
Thank you, Tom.
There were three, uh, there were three items, uh, before the board. Um, it was a family-related, um, apartment, uh, for one item. There was a shed, uh, encroachment, uh, for a second item. But the big item that was, uh, took a lot of time for discussion, uh, and, and Joan, Joanne, you, you would be, uh, appreciative of this. Uh, you get your, your vehicle serviced at, uh, at Platinum Service, uh, and they, um, they were approved for an expansion of their, uh, of their facilities. Um, almost all of the, uh, requests that they had, um, on their, on their petition, uh, was, was approved. Uh, one item, uh, didn't make it, but, uh, the majority of it did. Other than that, I, I have nothing to report further for, for the appeals.
Tom, if I can ask about the ZDA, are you seeing, um, more? Or how, how, are you seeing requests for accessory dwelling units, family and otherwise, um, to any?
That's typical. That's, that's typical. Um, I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
Are you seeing any more? Are you seeing any greater?
Yeah, I wouldn't say that there's an uptick in it. Uh, it, it's over, over the year, it tends to be a fairly steady stream of maybe, maybe one or two, uh, per month. Um, but overall, it, it's, it's a usual, it's a regular item, or it tends to be.
Okay.
I, I don't, I haven't seen any uptick in, in the frequency.
Okay. Uh, committee updates? Who would like to go first?
Uh, Liz, you want to go? Sue? Anybody?
I'll go. CPC, we're meeting still every week. Um, so, but there's really not much work going through the, the final comments and conditions and things and getting ready for the town meeting warrant. Um, so nothing really new to report.
Okay. Uh, yes, Susan?
I just, we put on the non-meeting. Um, several weeks ago, I saw on the board of selectmen agenda under, I, you know, the very bottom of their agenda, that we have the various items, it said something about the drive-in site. And Jim had not called, we haven't had a meeting in a long time because it was really no need for us to have it. So I, and hit, I had intended to call the town to find out what was that item, never did. Um, so I, I don't know what the, I don't know what they talked about because we.
I can answer that.
Okay, Brad, because I wasn't sure what, I think it's probably generally, what are we going to do with the site this summer? Uh, but Jim has not called a meeting of the drive-in site committee for a while. So I was, I was, I didn't know what that item was all about with the selectmen.
Um, speeding, speaking in semi-generalities and semi-specifics, um, this is coming from my advertising stuff. Um, I know Adam Epstein, the, uh, quote-unquote owner of the site this past year, offered his expertise and his staff to do a, um, drive-through shot clinic at the Yarmouth Drive-In Site. Um, because his staff and his team had no reported outbreaks of COVID, even though they welcomed, um, thousands and thousands and thousands of people through the site. Um, at times during the height of the pandemic here in Yarmouth, um, that, uh, letter was sent to the board of selectmen. And I think that's you were referring to. It was never acted on.
Okay.
Um, to answer your question about whether something else is going to happen, it is my understanding that another entity from Massachusetts has put his name into the ring and we shall see what he'll bring forth. But I think what you're referring to is a fact, they were, uh, they were offered the chance to use his expertise to do a clinic there to do shots through the site.
Yeah, that timing sounds about right, Brad. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Yes, Tom?
Uh, reporting on land disposition, um, uh, well, our next meeting is, uh, is next, next week on the 9th. But the, uh, couple meetings we've had so far, uh, three, at least three properties are being, um, uh, prepared for a, a, uh, selectman's, uh, approval, um, for, uh, uh, land disposition for, for sale of property. Uh, you know, other than that, I don't have any, anything further.
Yeah, that 10, that 10-acre site, an old townhouse in DuPont, that's going to be, um, that's going to be a bombshell.
Yeah, that won't be, um, that won't be, uh, that won't be on the next meeting on, next week. Uh, I've already had a preliminary on that, but, um, uh, you're right, that's a, that's a, uh, that's going to be a big, uh, uh, a big item of contention.
Yeah, that's been coming around for a number of decades. Um, on the community housing, uh, committee, we have, if you can see this, we have the HPP. It's the Housing Production Plan. It's about three-quarters of an inch thick, weighs about, mm, pound, pound and a half. Um, unfortunately, I think I'm going to be fired off the committee because I did two things I shouldn't have done. Um, Nate loves to play golf, so I said, the only way we can get more additional housing production is to cannibalize one of the golf courses. So that didn't do me too well with the director of the housing committee, uh, community housing committee. And then I said that basically we were playing mind games by doing this at all, which made Mary Wigan regret ever putting me on the committee. Um, so, uh, I, I don't know how long I'll be there, but I, I, uh, what our job on the community housing committee is to do is to try to come up with ways to add another 60 affordable units per year, uh, to Yarmouth, where, um, we don't really have any open land. And we don't have any large swaths except to use up more of our hotels, which, if I was a comic, which means I just looped this hearing, uh, by going all the way back to the 20, 25 minutes of what we talked about earlier. So, um, there we are.
Okay, thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Um, my report on, um, CEDC is, uh, we have, we have, uh, we, uh, can, uh, decided to retain the chamber, um, for an additional 18-month contract as our marketing agent essentially for tourism. Um, and, uh, and all of our marketing efforts on, on, uh, all social media and print and radio. Um, uh, they've been doing a great job for us despite, uh, the pandemic. Uh, and so that contract was extended, uh, which we were very happy to, uh, to have Mary Vilbon's help on that. And then secondly, um, the recreation commission came to our recreation department, came to us with a request for funding from the Tourism Fund, um, to participate as a partner with a, um, a developer in town who has also contributed, Community Visions, um, is the group, um, for a synthetic skating rink, uh, that could be used year-round. Uh, the, the technology now is such that they can make, make-believe ice, um, that your skates will work on. Um, and, uh, it's been used at, in several, um, cities and towns down south. We don't know of any in Massachusetts. Uh, but we're thinking this is, was a good, the proposal was well put together and it's short money. Um, where we would purchase these panels that are portable, can be set down on pretty much any sturdy, flat piece of land, uh, with some base, um, and that the recreation department is looking, um, uh, to have a July 4th skating party. Um, which is pretty innovative, um, and we're looking forward to, um, to, to seeing how all of that, uh, works out. Yes, Liz?
Yeah, it's actually really an interesting, I've seen it and I actually was looking at it for myself because all the ice skating rinks are closed and my daughters wanted to go ice skating. I'm like, well, what's it going to cost to throw one in my backyard? And, and I remember years ago, the fire department in the third, I think the third station, station number three in, in West Yarmouth.
On Buck Island.
Correct, put one up because, during the winter, because they wanted to make sure there was a safe location for kids that they didn't go on the ponds to, that they could possibly fall in. And so there's a whole safety component of it that I am a huge supporter of getting something that is safe and it prevents kids from being on the ponds during the winter and then also operating a tourism attraction for the summer. So as long as it's in a shady spot for the summer.
Yeah, that, that, that will be, that will be key. Susan?
Uh, Joanne, did they mention where they want to put the skating rink?
They did not. They have a couple of, of locations. Um, our tennis courts are ideal locations, uh, in, in those seasons when we're not using them as tennis courts or using, not using all of them. Uh, they're flat. They have a good, a good support, uh, foundation. Um, so those are the places such as at Flax Pond, um, over at Sandy Pond in particular. Um, and they haven't, they have not yet, um, identified, but it doesn't, it's not a permanent location, Susan, it's.
You move them around, right?
Yeah, you break them up, put them in a truck. They, you break them up, put them down. It's like, uh, you know, uh, a Jackson Brown tour. Yes.
What big of an area were they thinking of?
Uh, the, the area, it, it's, you can configure it in a couple of different ways. Um, the, the total area would be probably, if I'm, if I'm recalling correctly, um, maybe 100 feet long by 50 feet wide about, uh, to accommodate up to 40 skaters. And they've got the social distancing pieces, if they have to ratchet that up or down. Um, uh, but it's, uh, and they can make it big or have a small one, or they could have two. Um, it's, it's a, it's a pretty nifty, it's a pretty nifty idea. And if it's popular, you can add to it, you know, if we want to buy more panels. Um, so.
I think it would be a great attraction, especially in addition to like the seaside festival or, um, you know, the, the St. Patrick's Parade in March. And you could set it up on the field across from Town Hall and almost create an actual, um, central like point for the town. I think it would be really lovely. So.
Yeah, they, they've got, they've got some really innovative ideas on, on where they, where they want to go, uh, with this. And the other part of this is that there is, uh, half of the cost is being borne by the partner, Community Visions. So there's private money involved. Um, so, uh, it's a really, it's a win-win in terms of a partnership, uh, with the, with the town.
Joanne, uh, if you start talking about, uh, using the, um, um, the tennis courts, I think you're going to have, uh, the pickleball people, uh, being a little irate at you.
Uh, I hope they don't get mad at me. I, I can't imagine why that would be, but, uh.
Whoever, whoever is proposing.
That's why we have a recreation department that looks out for everyone, Tom. We'll let them, we'll let them fight that battle.
We would like to have more pickleball courts. Uh, at least that seems to be the sentiment, but it's a matter of the, the cost of setting them up.
Well, we'll find out on March 17th how, how much the community loves pickleball. So, yeah.
True.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, any other, any other comments on, on committees?
Yes. Madam Chair?
Will has something.
Yes, Will?
I just wanted to quickly share that the capital budget.
Capital Budget Committee made a very big presentation to the Select Board last week. And I am ashamed to say that I was not able to watch it, so I do not know if any of it was changed. But assuming that that nothing materially large happened. It was all, let me just say, a very thorough process, Madam Chair, as you know. To get to that stage and lots of very hard decisions made with every single department getting multiple opportunities to present their list. The the other quick thing is is that the Dennis Yarmouth Intermediate Middle School Project is in a little bit of a quiet phase, and we're waiting for official approval, so I believe, so that we can start the bidding process. And unless I'm wrong, but I just haven't seen a lot of updates recently. It's possible the bidding has already begun, but we are, we're still moving forward, even if it's slow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Kathy, I have one committee question. You had sent us a note about the Conservation Commission and an upcoming meeting with regard to what was your note?
Yeah, stormwater.
Stormwater, stormwater, MS four, if I get that right. Tell it, tell us a little bit about what we should be watching there.
Well, right now, there's the Conservation Commission has stormwater regulations, but the latest MS four permit increased some of the requirements. One of the things is if you if you're doing a project that disturbs one acre or more, you're supposed to get a stormwater permit from the Conservation Commission. The way it had been written previously was if you can if you can prove that you're not going to be discharging any water off of or any stormwater off of your property, you didn't need to get the permit. The MS four got a little bit stricter, saying, under any circumstance, you have to prove that it can't. Obviously, under certain circumstances, like the hundred-year storm, the two hundred-year storm, five hundred-year storm, something's going to come off your property and go into a municipal sewer system. So we were looking at changes that would require any project that impacts one acre or more to get a stormwater permit, which basically means they need to adhere to the Massachusetts Stormwater Manual and Regulations and remove a certain percentage of phosphorus and a certain percentage of total suspended solids.
The. Are there are there zoning implications for us?
I think there are subdivision implications for us, because I think like all of our subdivisions would probably impact that because it's not just for the road, or it would be for the entire development. You can't piecemeal a project. So these regulations will probably have a role in our subdivision regulations. Whether we end up incorporating them into our rules and regulations, or for the very few that we have, they'd need to get this stormwater permit is is something different. The Conservation Commission looked at these regulations previously, and they were concerned about not having a certain percentage or requirement for nitrogen removal from stormwater. Obviously, our biggest nitrogen load, eighty-five percent, comes from our septic systems. I think seven or eight percent comes from stormwater. So I think that's going to probably be the brunt of the discussion tomorrow. It it hasn't gone out for like a public comment period, and for any changes to be made, it would need to have a public hearing with the Conservation Commission. But technically, it's their regulations, but it would impact us with regard to subdivisions likely. And also, obviously, if we have a large development that impacts one acre or more, they'd need to go, but it wouldn't necessarily be a zoning related issue. It's just that I don't know if you remember that we had made some changes to our regulations for the MS four, I think it was the fall of two thousand nineteen, where we referenced specifically in our zoning bylaw that you need to meet the stormwater regulations for the town of Yarmouth. And then the other thing that's coming up on the Conservation Commission is they're going for permitting for the Higgins-Crawle shared use pathway. So I didn't know Tom might be interested in that, in the link that I.
I was going to mention it.
And in that link that you can click on it, and you can see that the plan's there if you're interested.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any additional correspondence beyond what you've sent us, Kath, that we need to be aware of?
Nope.
Any staff updates?
I think the they're looking at hiring the new town administrator. I think that that's coming early April. Robert Rittenhour, junior. Last I'd heard, it was they're hoping he would start in early April, and there'll be like a week or so of overlap with Bob Lawton to kind of ease him into that. The date for annual town meeting, changing that has been discussed a little bit, and I believe the Board of Selectmen meeting on March ninth, they're going to discuss that further. I believe they're going to also have the town clerk at that meeting to discuss that. I haven't received a copy yet, but there's going to be an article about the town of Yarmouth in Business View Magazine, and I will forward that around to everybody. Kind of talking up Yarmouth a little bit and getting some word out about our community. I do know that I think Tom and Susan were talking about the Barnstable Airport earlier. There is a another Zoom meeting that's coming up for the Airport Master Plan, which is on March twenty second. And I'll send out the links to everyone if people are are interested in that.
Yep. We have a, we have a, we have a liaison, a Yarmouth liaison.
Dr. Marasco.
Dr. Marasco, okay.
Yeah, I I'm not sure exactly where that got left. I know that the Board of Selectmen were interested in having a separate public meeting, I think, for people in West Yarmouth. I don't know whether that's happening or when that's happening, or whether it got kiboshed. I don't know if Liz knows knows any further. Yeah. I think they wanted to be something separate than a general public meeting. They did have me inquire with regard to whether the Cape Cod Commission got involved in the master plan. And they really don't. It's only when they actually want to implement anything that they have identified in their master plan, then they would, then the commission would get involved.
Okay. I had just one item. I wanted to just do a quick reminder for everyone. And Susan, this answers a question you had sent to me some time ago. On correspondence among planning board members, we need to be careful not to reply all. It breaks open meeting law. And just this week, the town of Bourne got into a legal fisticuffs with the chairman of the Board of the Planning Board filing a legal complaint with the Secretary of State, the Attorney General, that three members of the board had been talking, and therefore it was a core of four members, and it was a quorum, talking meaning emailing. And made kind of front page news. So that's that's the reason we can't talk to each other offline in any format. We can talk individually to each other. But it just as a reminder, and I couldn't believe I was reading about Bourne this week, that in fact, it got to the point where the chair filed a complaint with the AG about other members of his planning board. And I'm I'm sure I would never do that. And I'm sure we won't. But just a reminder. So that's my, that's my final, my final comment on that. I hope I've clarified that in some way. Yes, Tom?
Yeah, you you went right to correspondence and staff updates, but we said we'd talk again on board member items. The question I was asking earlier on the DRI on that communication pole at the chapel. Kathy, do you have any information on that?
Yes. Mark Grills, the building commissioner, just sent over the mandatory referral to the Cape Cod Commission today. It is a mandatory DRI. It's a hundred and twenty feet tall. They have two options. One of them is a like a lattice tower, and then one's also a monopole, but it's not a concealed monopole. All of the, all of the antenna are on the outside, based on the plans that I saw. So.
I saw the, I saw the crane that was used to put a balloon up at that up at that elevation, so they'd have a visual reference for their for their submission.
Correct.
The second question I had, not so much question, but I a comment on the what you said earlier about the the CONCOM for the notice of intent on Higgins-Crawle Shared Ruth, Shared Use Pathway. It's it's it's, the plans are very well developed. And I think it's, I think it's long overdue. This is a project that I I remember Jeff mentioning as as much as three years ago. It had, it had been part of the Vineyard Wind. Hope that some of that money would be available to help do this project, but now this is going ahead on its own. The last item I had also had to do with Jeff and DPW. Bayview Street has been also referenced anywhere from three to four years now that it it's ready for construction, ready for construction, and and nothing, nothing seems to be happening. I've had reason to have to use the facilities around the hospital myself over the last few months. And it does not seem to be any activity getting Bayview moving forward to completion. The Bayview is primarily within Yarmouth, but it, we share that with with Barnstable. But Yarmouth has taken the responsibility of doing the whole project for for both towns. So it's just something that I don't know why it seems to be taking forever to get get projects like that on the way. That's the end of my comments.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Anyone else that I might have missed? My my apologies for running over that, Tom. Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Say again.
And we'll do the roll. Tom Baron?
Aye.
Susan Britta?
Aye.
Brad Goodwin?
Aye.
Liz Harts Grove?
Aye.
Will Rubenstein?
Aye.
Joanne Crowley, yes. And that brings to a close our March third planning board meeting. Thank you all.
Thanks, guys.
See you on St. Patrick's Day.
Oh, that's right.